Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Uh, thank you everybody for coming tonight. I'd like to, uh, lead us in our prayer and write for my prayer, we'll go right into the pledge of allegiance. Everybody please stand. Mr. Higgins-Botham, call roll please.
Sir.
Councilman Boozer.
Here.
President Logan.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Hogg.
Here.
You have a call, Mr. President. Thank you. Uh, item five is approval of the agenda. In our pre-meeting, we had one item that was added. It's eight C fourteen, which is a consent agenda item. It's travel and training for one employee through our HR department for the Tuscaloosa Human Resource Professionals Leadership Workshop, uh, August the eighteenth in the amount of eighty dollars. Again, that, that will be an addition on the consent item. So I will offer that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham. President Logan. Yes. Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Thank you. Item six, visitors to address the council. I see the Honorable Senator Gerald Allen here tonight. Saw him, uh, over the weekend and he, he wanted to give everybody a legislative update. So we appreciate you, Senator, coming up and giving us a update on what we got going on.
Mr. President, it's my privilege to be here tonight and to see a, a well-known face in my life is sitting here, Mr. Boozer here, Coach Boozer, Lee Boozer. And, uh, tell you what, we go way back yonder, don't we?
Yes, sir, too far.
And, uh...
I'm not quite as old as you are, though, dear.
I feel like I'm a thousand years old.
Just selling candy when I was wet behind the ears.
I tell you what, you have absolutely...
That was before you were Sir, Mr. Senator. We appreciate what you've done, though, Honorable.
Well, I tell you what, it's, uh, and, Mr. President, it's hard to believe that, uh, that, uh, starting January the ninth is the first day of the legislative session. And the reason we're starting early, uh, is that we, it's called a election year. And so that's what, that's why we're meeting January the ninth and starting that. And, uh, of course, a lot of activity's gonna be going on. As you know, next week is an election, uh, for the US Senate. It's gonna be very important for all of us to pay attention to that and go to the polls and cast a vote. Give you, uh, just a little glimpse of maybe what would be taking place in, in January. And, uh, one of the things that, uh, the mayor and I have been involved with is to, uh, the Tuscaloosa County Road Improvement Commission. Although I do not expect, unless something develops more so, more quickly than, than we think. I know, uh, Washington is currently building, um, a piece of legislation. I'm not sure if it's gonna be one or maybe two, and maybe I heard, maybe as many as three pieces of legislation dealing with infrastructure. And so, what, what that, what that does, in my opinion, if Congress moves on that piece of legislation, that places, uh, our state in, in an awkward situation where we do not have funding to match the twenty percent funding that's necessary for us as a state to go out and, and to, uh, have shovel-ready projects in which the Trump administration has, has seemed to stress that, that they would be looking at those projects that, that may be ready to shovel. And, uh, so, so one of the problems that we're facing is that, uh, um, if, if Congress moves on that, then, then we as a state's got to make some very difficult, tough decisions through that. The last time a gas tax was passed was in nineteen ninety-two. And, uh, since then, back, back in ninety-two, I was driving a car that's getting sixteen miles an hour, uh, you know, miles per, per gallon. And now I'm driving a vehicle that gets, you know, thirty, thirty-two miles per gallon. And, uh, uh, so it's, and the cost, if you look at the index, the cost of, of repairs and building new infrastructure, new roads and bridges, it has went up, uh, quite a bit as well, if you, if you study indexes like some people do. So, like Bruce does. Bruce, I appreciate you sort of the work that you did. Thank you. So, that, that's, uh, that's gonna be, uh, that's gonna be something to, to watch for the coming months and see how fast Congress moves with that piece of legislation. The other piece that, that you'll be hearing a little bit more about is that, um, there is some discussions going on with, with the corrections, uh, state prisons. Uh, there is some, uh, some, uh, discussions going on, uh, uh, between, uh, two or three groups and trying to find exactly what be best to, to, uh, to do. But one of the things that we do not want to see happen is to see, uh, this state not, not do what it needs to do to address the, the prison issue. And, uh, like California, uh, two or three years ago, they, they released like forty thousand inmates. And, uh, and that's one thing that we as a state, uh, certainly don't want to face because, uh, the face of possibilities of, of, of a federal judge telling us how much it's gonna cost us and cost the citizens of this great state. So, that's why it needs to be addressed. The State Senate passed a piece, uh, three hundred and fifty million dollars to, to address the critical needs of the prisons. But the House failed to pass it and, uh, it failed on the last day of the session. And so, uh, we are very much conscious how serious this is. But one, one of the things that's, uh, important to me and many of my colleagues as well is the fact that, that once a, a, as an inmate, uh, gets released, you know, is he prepared to, to come home, go home? And, uh, to be able to, uh, rehab, give, give training, get, give that person, individual, the tools that he can exit and come and, and become a very productive citizen is very important. And, uh, and of course, the statistics are not very friendly for those men and women because they wind up back in our system. And, uh, certainly we want to take a good look at what we can do as a state to prepare them to, to live a good, productive life. So that's, that's another thing. As far as, um, the budget goes, uh, the Education Trust Fund budget, uh, is this year, of course, uh, the, the new year starts October one, is, will be at six point four billion dollars. We still, you know, back in oh-eight, it was six point eight billion. So we're not, we haven't reached back where we was in oh-eight. And although there is, uh, everything else is very expensive and, um, uh, we, we dealing with the healthcare issue and we, and RSA issue as well. And, uh, so pension, pension boards across this country are, are, uh, taking a good, hard look at what's happening. You know, back, back in nineteen ninety-four, when I went to Montgomery, RSA was a hundred percent solid. And today, if we had to pay out the benefits today, it'd be about sixty-three, sixty-four percent payout. So, now, we addressed that problem, uh, partly back, back two years ago, three years ago. And, um, and it's our hope that we can place, uh, the RSA back where it needs to be. Although I, I do think it's, it's got some challenges that, that we'll be facing in years out. Those in the system today, it, it's, in my opinion, are safe, no problem with that. But, uh, what's, the problem is, is that what's gonna be in twenty, twenty-five, thirty years from now is where, is, is the problems that we're looking at. So, and, uh, certainly there may be some other pieces of legislation that may be coming to, to, uh, strengthen the RSA. And, uh, and that's exactly what we want to do. We wanna make sure that when the, uh, the citizens of Alabama that's in that system can retire without fear of losing their retirement. So that's, that's, that's a very important piece. As far as the general fund, uh, the general fund is, uh, is one point eight billion and, um, uh, so much of that, if you, if you take Medicaid and corrections, uh, it takes, uh, uh, almost half, in fact, more than half of the, of the general fund. And, uh, and so that's, that's something that, uh, we have to be conscious of. General fund doesn't have a growth fund, uh, uh, it doesn't grow like the, the, uh, sales tax ETF program does. So it's, it's one that we're gonna have to be very conscious of. Uh, and, uh, but it's predicated on priorities. You know, we're gonna continue to set priorities. And Alabama is one of those states that has a constitutional amendment that we must operate within our means, our balanced budget. And, uh, and so that's, that, that's one reason why with that, so many times that we have to take a hard look and maybe, uh, recheck and take a hard look at different programs that we do have in place to make, make those changes and modify those, those programs to make them work more efficiently. So, so that's, of course, you know all about that, being a member of this council. Is that the citizens have entrusted you with X number of tax dollars. And, and, uh, and that, that means that you, you know, not only you, but the citizens are accountable for those dollars as well because it's, it's important to do that. So, anyway, I am delighted to, to serve the city of Northport as your state senator. And, uh, and, and serving as a senator sometimes has its challenges, just like each of you face on, on this council. And, uh, sometimes it's not easy to make those difficult decisions. But you, you must be, uh, just stand firm, believe in yourself, believe in the, the city of Northport. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna do whatever I can to assist you to make this city at, at best as, as it can be. So that's, that's my pledge to you as well. And, uh, Mayor, it's always good to see you and enjoy serving if you're on the Tuscaloosa County Road Improvement Commission. And, uh, so, I'll just have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Thank you so much for that update. Absolutely. We, uh, we thank you serving with, with our mayor's office on the road commission. Of course, you guys got some challenges with everything else. You know, you're having to stretch a dollar in the general fund and you got so many needs and with Medicaid being over half your budget. So you know, that's, that's a challenge. So we really appreciate you and the entire delegation for what you do for our city. Item eight A one is new business. It's a first reading. We have three of them. They're, they're basically condemnation, so we'll go through them rather quickly. Uh, the first one, eight A one, is a first reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at nineteen twenty-two Fourteenth Avenue. Mr. Stevens, this is step one of a two or three-step process, right?
Yeah, yes, sir, that's correct. Uh, this house, I believe, had some fire damage and we've done all the proper notifications to, to get to this first reading.
All right. I'll offer that for a first reading on that one. Eight A two is a first reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at thirteen thirteen Twentieth Avenue. Mr. Stevens.
I believe this house is, or has some problems due to a fire as well. And again, it's been notified and this is not the first reading.
All right. I'll offer that one for a first reading. Eight A three is a first reading of an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at two-one-zero-two Tenth Street. Mr. Stevens.
Uh, this one, uh, I think is just, uh, fallen to a state of disrepair and the building inspector has determined it to be unsafe. And again, this is the first reading for that, uh, process to continue.
Okay. I'll offer that one for a first reading and just for the citizens to know the process, once it goes to first reading, they have so many days or the property owner to either get it in code or we're gonna tear it down, correct?
Uh, yes, sir, they've, uh, we posted notice, notification, we published in the newspaper and sent letters. Uh, we're in the forty-five day notification process now. Uh, after the second reading, we'll have another short waiting period and then we can begin the process of bidding out for demolition.
Yeah, so I wanna make sure the citizens know, when, when we see a house being torn down, we get it, but it takes so many days by state code. We have to make sure we fulfill that, that ordinance. So, uh, thank you, St-, thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Eight B one is a resolution appointing members to the Williamson Cemetery Board. Ms. Darnes.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, there are two vacancies on the Williamson Cemetery Board and we cannot resume these meetings until these vacancies are filled. The first recommendation, first resolution is to appoint Chuck Gordo to fill Lackey Stevens' position.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution, appointing Mr. Chuck Gordo to the Williamson Cemetery Board to fill the vacancy of Mr. Lackey Stevens? I'll make that motion, Mr. President. That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boozer. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham. Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. All right, Brooke, you said there was another vacancy.
Yes, sir, uh, Lucian Lewis is, that position's vacant and we would like to appoint R.G. Lewis.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Mr. R.G. Lewis to the Williamson Cemetery Board to fill the vacancy of Mr. Lucian Lewis?
I'll make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham. Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Item two is a resolution authorizing the sale of a two thousand and five Ferrera pumper truck. Ms. Darnes.
Uh, yes, sir, the city, uh, used FireTech to sell the two thousand and five pumper truck. And we had one bid from Conway County Fire Department and that was for forty-eight thousand. Ten percent of that would have to go to FireTech, which leaves us forty-three thousand two hundred.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution authorizing the sale of a two thousand and five Ferrera pumper truck in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars to Conway County Fire Department and authorize the payment of the ten percent commission fee in the amount of forty-eight hundred to FireTech Used Apparatus Sales Company?
I'll make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boozer. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham. Sir. Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Item C is our consent agenda. They have fourteen items again. Uh, they range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training, uh, P.O. requisitions, of course, and that travel and training, eight C fourteen is for the, uh, leadership workshop for our HR department. Again, these are fourteen items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
So moved.
That's a motion by Councilman Boozer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higgins-Botham. Sir, Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Item nine, reports of special committees to council. I didn't know if mayor or council had any, any reports of special committees. All right. Hearing now, item ten is public hearings. We have none on the agenda. Uh, item eleven, senate administrator's business. And I wanted to, uh, preface this by asking Bruce, I know he and a couple staffers attended, uh, the chambers trip to Greenville, South Carolina, uh, last week and got some really good information. I think they're more energized, uh, because of the opportunities that they've seen in Greenville. Uh, so I'll, I'll let Bruce under his, his business, uh, kinda give a brief overview of the trip.
Um, yeah, it was a great trip. Uh, it was attended by myself, uh, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Snyder. Um, the chamber hosted this trip. The intent of the, the trip to Greenville was to witness and experience a, a city which has undergone a complete transformation over the past twenty to thirty years. And, uh, from our standpoint, it was really exciting to see what they've done. And, and me personally, it wasn't the, uh, just what the city has done as far as what you're seeing in their downtown area, which is a big, a big point of focus for them. But it's also, uh, the concept where they had a lot of public and city participation along with municipal participation. Uh, it is a, a city where everybody is buying into the vision of what Greenville is doing. And really, from Northport's standpoint, Mr. President, if, if you look at where they were twenty and thirty years ago and the crossroads they were at and the opportunities they have, I guess that's kind of what excited me about where the city of Northport is. And we're, we're very similar in, in the respect that we're at a point of where they were at that point in their history. It was a great trip and I was glad I could go.
Any one thing you wanted to pull from the trip, meaning if you had to just see one thing that you saw in Greenville that we could maybe apply to Northport? Cause we're, we're gonna, and I, I wanna make this statement. We're not trying to be like Greenville, not trying to be like anybody else but Northport, but some of the philosophies that they used, what would be one, just one or two words where you can say, hey, we may want to look at being more progressive? Whatever the, whatever the word may be in your opinion after coming back.
I, I guess progressive is a good word, but, but for me, I guess it's, their big word is reimagining. They reimagined their, their city at a point when, when they needed to do that. And I think that's, that's really what I took away from it. They created a vision for Greenville, which is what Northport is, is looking at, you know? Creating a vision and then they stuck to the vision.
Absolutely. I see we still got the Honors, the Honorable Senator here, so maybe in the general fund, they can give us a little ADEC of money. We can get that reimagined vision going a little bit. Uh, Bruce, you got anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Uh, item twelve, departmental business. I think our legal department. Ron, you had some clarifications on community corrections.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, just so the minutes, uh, uh, follow up to talk about, um, I think it was not the last council meeting, the one before that. Mr. Jobson brought to the council's attention that Mr. Scott Stevens was on the, um, the correct name, the Tuscaloosa County Community Punishment Corrections Authority. I think it's commonly referred to as Community Corrections. And that is true. In November thirteenth, it was formed. There were seventeen, uh, board members from, one from Northport, one from Tuscaloosa, one from Sheriff's Department, uh, one from the Tuscaloosa Ministerial Alliance, one from Shelton State, one from Indian Rivers, lots of different entities involved. Um, and so that group did form the Communities Correction Authority. And then this board, this, uh, council, uh, a few months later, changed that, uh, appointment, uh, from, uh, Mr. Collins to at the time interim, uh, Police Chief Gerald Burton, who continues to serve for the city of Northport. So, Mr. Collins has not been on that board since, uh, two thousand and fourteen.
All right. I just wanted to make sure, you, you clarified it. I was making sure, I, I like Mr. Stevens, so, uh, I'll make sure he, he's not on the community corrections. So I was just clarifying that. I think you had mentioned his name, so we've got him on enough board, so we won't put him on another one.
I say Scott Stevens.
You did, but, but let the record show, you did...
Scott Collins.
Yes, so you did say Mr. Collins at the time was a twenty thirteen appointment, but in twenty fourteen, the city, uh, appointed then interim Police Chief Gerald Burton. Now, here's a question. One, does it satisfy, I think we had a, a citizen, I think that should satisfy their request, I think. Uh, the second one, in any action that the council needed to take to make sure we take the interim tag off? Maybe from our language standpoint, or do you...
No, I think that's fine. It, it was the appointed person and, and he's, obviously, he was interim chief at the time he was appointed. Uh, but now he's no longer interim.
Okay. Thank you. Item thirteen is public comment. We have no citizens signed up to speak tonight. Uh, item fourteen is mayor and council members' business. Uh, I'll start with District One, Councilman Boozer.
Yes, we have an administrative meeting, uh, tomorrow at three-thirty in the conference room.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Anything else you...
Well, I didn't, I didn't, uh, last, at my first meeting, I didn't say a lot because I was kinda feeling the waters. Uh, but I do wanna say thanks again to all the councilmen, uh, and the mayor for welcoming me in, uh, to this appointed position. Uh, I would like to, uh, say that it's an honor to serve in Dennis Hambrich's position. Everybody that I've talked to, I, I knew Dennis years ago, but, uh, hadn't, hadn't seen him in a while. I just hope that I can fulfill and fill his shoes in a manner that the citizens in District One and the City, and the City of Northport, uh, approve of. Uh, and, uh, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve the city of Northport. I've always been a, as a principal and coach, I, I've always served the community that I lived in, uh, and worked in, uh, and, and look forward to doing that here in, uh, uh, a much more responsible, uh, position. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, under my business, a couple things. Um, Russ Ware with BKI came by our pre-meeting today and gave us, uh, he and I gave another brief update. Mayor Aaron, myself and, and Bruce's office, we met with our, uh, MLK improvement, uh, team. And about a month ago, very good meeting. And out of that meeting, we've pretty much, uh, tried to look at some dates for our public involvement meeting. Uh, pending ALDOT approval, we're, we're looking at a September date, probably late September to have one public involvement meeting. Uh, but I'll have some, I call storyboards for the public at some point. You just come up here and look. Um, so it's an improvement project. Uh, it's not really changing the whole roadway per se, but it is gonna change the way we look at that area and open it up for some potential development and some pedestrian safety. And again, uh, we'll get with our, we'll get with our, uh, small committee and our task force committee to firm up a September date for a, uh, MLK improvement public involvement meeting. And that's one that we have to have to satisfy, uh, our federal guidelines and, and, and our requirements. Uh, that's, that'll probably be late September, but we will send out some notifications from our task force meeting. So that, that's coming. Uh, also wanted to recognize Ms. Vicky Turnage, Vicky, and Ms. Jessica Beckwith. They are with, uh, People First of Tuscaloosa. And I see some, some of my guests again, headed by Mr. James. James works for me over at Park and Rec, so thank you, the, the, and focus. Uh, they wanna see how government works and we really appreciate them coming by and wanting to, you know, just, we appreciate you guys taking time out of your schedule to come see how government runs. The other one that I did have, I wanted to at least give everybody an update on our levy. And Ron, you, you helped me kinda firm up some of my information. Uh, we're about eighty percent complete. Is that, is that right on that levy repair?
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, there's still some, some aspects of the project that still need to be completed. Uh, of course, we all look like Maseratis compared to the federal government. We run like a singer sewing machine. So hopefully, when we get this, uh, to about ninety percent complete, we can give everybody a firmed up date when we can call the project over and done and complete. Again, this is the levy repair project that we have, uh, just north of Rice Mine Road. So, uh, hopefully we'll get that going and have a, an update for everybody next council meeting when we can get a, a firmed up completion date. But, uh, August twenty-first, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a big guy. I love the stars and the moon, so we've got a, we got an eclipse happening on the twenty-first, right? What, one fifteen? I had to say that because now I don't want you somewhere driving and it gets dark on you between one fifteen and one twenty. So if you're out and about, watch the eclipse. That's all I have. District Three, Councilman Sullivan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a couple of things real quick. First off, uh, I wanna thank our police department. We've had some, uh, vehicle break-ins over the weekend. Fortunately, they were able to arrest three suspects, uh, the same night that it happened. So, very proud of you guys. I appreciate the hard work y'all put in. Uh, definitely put some residents at ease knowing that they were caught so quickly. Um, also tomorrow, sounds like it's gonna be a very fun day for a lot of children, uh, especially mine, who will be starting kindergarten tomorrow. So, uh, just wanna wish everybody going back to school, uh, hope they have a great year. I know we have, uh, one of the county house principals, I couldn't let you get out of here without saying, hey, Dr. Dickens is here with us. He's one of the county house principals, so good luck to you. I think you're gonna need it.
Yeah.
I don't envy, envy that at all. Um, one other thing, I know one of our firefighters, Manuel, is here with us. I don't mean to call you out, but I gotta say something. Um, most of you know, not too long ago, he did a charity walk from Fire Station Two to Children's Hospital in Birmingham. And what I found out recently was, I don't know why, but he's doing it again. Um, he leaves this Friday, what time do you leave it? He leaves six P.M. from Station Two and doing it again. I think he said he had ten people going with him. And again, this is a walk to children's in Birmingham to benefit childhood cancer. Is that what it is? Uh, I just wanted to call you out and tell you thank you for that. I really appreciate it, so.
Yeah. Hey, Manuel, I got a question. Now, when you walk it, how many breaks do you give yourself to hit that mark? Do you...
Man, did anybody start with you, finish with you? They did? I wouldn't make it out of Station Two. That's very impressive you do that. It's very impressive. I appreciate that. It brings awareness to something that's definitely needed, so thank you very much for that.
If you haven't seen it, he's on a commercial.
On a commercial? Look, look at that. If anybody wants any more information about what he's doing, feel free to, to hit him up when the meeting's over. As always, Senator Allen, thank you for being here.
Uh, District Four, Councilman Davis. Uh, District Four, Councilman Davis.
I have none, Mr. President.
District Five, Councilman Hogg.
The thing about being in District Five, everybody gets to say everything that I want to say beforehand. So, let's go home.
All right. Uh, Mayor Aaron.
Oh, I don't really have anything either.
All right. Item fifteen is adjournment. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. We're adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.